Seventh to order please, full call.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Wolke?
Here.
Mrs. Erlich? Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
This is Mr. Emmerich, we have a quorum.
Okay, the minutes from the December 13 meeting have been disseminated and mailed out to everyone. Is there any corrections, deletions, or revisions?
I approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. First item is historical district application for nine through eleven West Main Street, the Mayflower Building. Exterior alterations for a three-quarter inch set in the brick window. Staff have a report?
Yes, sir. This is the second, this is the second time that the planning commission seen this application. Back in December 17, the planning commission approved the brick infills to be three inches. We identified that they were actually infilled with a depth of three-quarter inch. After speaking with the mason, the reasoning for this was the depth of the windowsill is why they had to make it three-quarters inch into three inches. So the applicant is now requesting to allow for that three-quarter inch inset of the brick windows and on your drawing you'll see exactly which ones they're requesting. Staff recommends denial unless another option is provided at the meeting that is suitable to the planning commission. And I would conclude my report.
You talking about the windowsill, you mean the interior windowsill?
Yeah.
So the exterior is not?
Yeah, so right here, right here at the bottom, that filled, that filled up made it to where they couldn't make that three inches. The applicant is here and I'm not sure if your, is your mason coming?
Unfortunately not.
So this, this was not reviewed before they installed it, you, the changes?
Not, not the changes.
Okay.
Correct.
It was originally was approved to the three inch.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is any other, any questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm really not excited about what they did. I don't think it really shows the kind of relief that we wanted to see and I, and I've been told that the fire escape may hide it. I honestly, I think that the fire escape might draw more attention to it. I'd like to see and talk to the architect and the mason about any other kind of options that could at least provide some kind of relief. Otherwise, when you're driving by there, it just looks like it's a bricked over, it's bricked over windows that have the same relief as the rest of the building. And I know that it would be impossible to match the bricks, but that only enhances the, the look, if you will. So I'd like to see them come back with some options.
I tend to agree that it looks like the bricks were just patched, patched in. Doesn't look, you know, there's no relief, there's no relief or designation, but I think the three inches would look much better.
But if you can't hear the three inches?
I don't know.
The mason's not here.
It was an equal moment.
Yeah.
Would, would, would there be an option to make the, I mean, I guess, what are the options that we're sitting with today?
Yeah, I don't know. From my communication with the mason, I don't think it's a matter that three inches can't happen. I think it's a matter of three, three-quarters of an inch is industry standard. So when it was communicated to him, there was a fumble in communication and he went with what he's done for the last forty years and he did what he deems as the most structurally secure thing. So that's where that was left off. There, we haven't, you know, presented or thought of any great alternatives as far as leaving it like it is, but providing more definition. Me personally, I, I think when you walk by, you can, I think it's pretty easy to see where the existing windows were. I think you can see the exterior, the character on the top and bottom. Obviously, you would see it more if it was three inches in. That's just a matter of how you perceive it when you look at it. To me, it, I can see that they were there, but I also have been around the building a lot, so I've noticed the changes. So, yeah, unfortunately, the mason's not here to share his piece on why, you know, he thinks it should be that and why he thinks it would be a more secure option. And I'm not going to pretend like I'm a brick expert and a brick mason myself, because that would just not be accurate. But, yeah, from, from my point of view, the two goals with this were to provide the fire escape to create, you know, a fireproof window. We obviously accomplished that. And then to maintain the character of the window. And to my eyes, I, you know, I think we accomplished that, but that's every eyes, every set of eyes will see that differently. That's just where it's at.
I think no matter what you're gonna, you do, it's going to like a patched window. The inset is just different than what we thought it was gonna be.
What would be the impact of the project to remove them and put it in as originally planned?
Yeah, they'd have, they'd have to rip it all back out. They'd have to go track down a thinner block inset on the interior. We use the same block on the inside of protrude in, inside the building further, which would disrupt drywall and such on the inside. So they'd have to track down a thinner block and then that would allow the brick to inset further. Mainly, you're looking at some material cost, but mainly labor costs is the intensive, it's where it gets expensive.
But the mason was instructed three inches, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we want to table until we can get the ma, get the mason here and ask?
I would continue on English.
I'll make that as a motion to table and get the, the mason here.
Okay.
To talk about why, why he didn't do the three inches and we get there any other options.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to table until the next, well, until the mason can be here.
I'll second.
Does that a second? Full call please.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Item is tabled.
Okay, next item is historical district certificate for appropriateness. Two twenty West Main Street, front facade, west facade, south facade, some finished work. Staff have a report?
Yes, sir. So there's a, a bunch of alterations here, so bear with me as I go through them. So this is for two twenty West Main Street. The OHI form describes this as a Queen Anne style building. Contributing features include complex roof massing, paneled recessed with transom and high side lights, it's glass and one-over-one double hung sashes. The large bay with overhinged eaves, eaves and box cornice, half timbered gables with mull and windows. And then the front gable end has a split ridge and ridge ornaments that are also referenced on the OHI form. So on the front facade, they're proposing new black asphalt shingle roofing. It's currently asphalt shingles that are pretty much faded, but I, I believe they were black. So that replacement is pretty much like for like. Six windows are proposed to be replaced with double hung windows with muttons that'll look close to what's existing there. The top gable end is proposed to be infilled with a decorative trim at the top. The second story porch on the west facade is also being proposed to be removed, however, will be visible from the front facade. There is an elevation drawing and I can pass around a bigger set as well that goes into more detail.
Is there only one of these?
Yeah. Along the west facade facing South Short Street, a new entry porch is proposed where the second floor porch on the northwest side of the building is proposed to be removed. The second first floor porch is also being proposed to be removed. There is not infill porch proposed in that area. The fish scales are going to remain intact in the middle of the building. On the south facade, four windows are being replaced on the rear facade with pillow reserved provision fit double hung windows. The pillow reserved window does have a traditional look with the wood and aluminum clad double hung. And then finally, a new ridge is being proposed to divert rainwater. So the finish details, the main body color is proposed to be painted with a Sherwin-Williams dowel and slab. The lower wall color is black with an accent color of white. The roof is also that black cast function. So per our design manual, we do run into some issues primarily with the front gable end. The front gable end does have some ornaments up top on both split ridges, as well as that split ridge is a contributing feature for the OHI form. So going through that staff analysis, we do have some big concerns with that. The OHI form denotes multiple significant features that are proposed to be altered. The front gable end, as well as the ridge ornaments are being proposed to be removed with this application. Next, section two point nine of the design manual is porches. The proposed porch replacement does not match the original height and width of the original porch per that section two point nine. So staff recommends denial of the porch removal and the infill on the split ridge on the front facade facing Main Street due to the following. The alterations do not meet design manual section two point four and two point nine. The contributing features as reference for the OHI form are being altered. Staff does however recommend approval of some of their requests of the window replacement and paint based on the following. The original windows referenced in the form are being maintained and the already altered windows are being replaced and the paint colors can be found in other areas in the district. And that'll conclude my report.
Yeah, it's hard to see this elevation from out of drone sometimes when you drive by. The, the feature of the double bridge in the front, that basically is gonna disappear, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be infill, so it would be one standard peak. They would try to match the decorative trim as much as possible, but it would be altered with the application.
That's unusual feature, the way that's constructed. Is the, is the owner or the representative of the building?
Yeah, Tom here.
Yeah, speak your name.
Mike Twist, two twenty-six South Market. I'm the architect representing Tom Klepp, the owner of the building. And I, can we start with the double, the double gable feature? So the reason that we're proposing to modify that is because there's a drainage issue. So that front double gable, there's a real small flat roof and all of the water just basically comes from there straight down the front of the building. So at some point in time, we don't know when, there must have been a downspout and a gutter in that location, or really a downspout handling that little bit of water. I'm gonna pass this exhibit around so you guys can see that if, if these are the same thing, but just different views. So if the gable goes away and the double, the double gable needs to stay, there's gonna have to be some way to collect the water and get it out. Now, you can see from Ed, what you have in your hand, that downspout's gonna come over, it's gonna have to kick, it's not gonna look the greatest. So that, that's the reason why we're trying to stay with the intent, you know, the design intent as much as possible as what's happening on the west side and then eliminate this issue with the water drainage at the front of the building. Now, I joked with our team, we could just take the downspout straight down the middle and the gutter, or the downspout could just split the, the windows. That would be a real nice feature. But that, that, I wanted to explain to planning commission, that's why we chose to, you know, how do we fix this issue with the drainage? And the only thing that we could come up with, and I'm open to anyone else's suggestions, was really just to gable that off, get rid of the double gable. There are some lion, Austin, what did you call them, at the very top?
Ornament.
Ornament, you know, there's two of them currently. We would save one of them and really put, put one of those up on the top of the new gable to match what's going on in the west gable.
Can I? So I drove by and took some pictures. I'm looking at my camera and zooming in, I hadn't noticed that those were lions. Those are present at other peaks on the house.
Yes.
Going to one doesn't seem like a big issue. And there's a downspout coming out of the, the middle front.
Yes.
So the water just dumps right out of there.
Currently, the downspout has been, has been removed, or it fell off at some point in the past. So the water currently is coming out and just running straight down, just free falling, if you will.
Do you know if the downspout went before?
We don't, we don't. I mean, I don't have, I know that Tom went and spoke with Patrick Kennedy for old photos of that. And at one point, I mean, Tom's here, there was a porch along the front of the, of the building. And we think that there must have been a downspout coming down somewhere along the front and then it went down onto that front porch.
So there's already been a porch?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Porch is already on.
Yes, yes.
I'm wondering if the downspout came down the center and then went out to the edges?
Well, that's what, if, Mayor, if you look at the rendering I just sent around, that's what we would propose to do.
Oh, okay.
But I want, I want you to see that because it, honestly, it doesn't look great. Now, could you paint it and?
They should change color of the building.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, you could, but it's not gonna, either way, it's gonna look a little off.
Here's my other observation. The front is the only one that has the twin, twin peaks.
That's, that's correct.
The other sides all have the one.
Yes.
So to go to one is not gonna look odd.
I don't know what you're looking at me for.
Because we disagree on that.
Well, we do, but it's, there's an OHI form that says that that is a historic feature of the building. My question is, I saw the rendering.
Which one?
Yeah, Patrick, the rendering, you would, the gable would go, would be eliminated. So you would, you would keep the double, the double peak?
Sure. So if you kept the double peak, are there not different ways that you can better disguise this, this downspout, like divert it so that it's going around to the side instead of in the front? It's, I mean, it's like it was, it was drawn to, to be as stark as possible?
Yeah, that's right. Now, that, I mean, you still have to get the flow, you still have to get the fall.
You are being taped, you know.
Maybe you want to.
You still, Patrick, you still have to get the fall. Now, is the fall as, you know, as much as what is shown in the rendering? Maybe not. But the only other solution that we could come up with is the water would have to go into the, the front wall. So you could go like an internal gutter. As everyone knows, trying to keep water out of the building structure as much as possible, that's ideal. So we would want to eliminate that possibility as much as possible to keep the water on the exterior of the building and not bring it on the interior.
If you eliminate the peak, why would the gutter still come out here and down?
It, it does, yeah. If you eliminate, if you eliminate, if you stick with the double peak, you have to, you have to have a means for the water to be dispersed.
And then I can see this. But if you eliminate the peak like is here, wouldn't you run the water a different way?
No, it has to come out the front. That's the way it currently slopes. So by creating the gable, you don't need the gutter and the downspout on the front.
Creating this?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Because it's going?
Yeah, it's just sloping to the, to the west and east.
You're just giving the worst case scenario with corporate.
It would only stay if this.
If it's the double peak, yeah.
Well, I'm just confirming.
I'm saying that the way you drew it though is you put these white downspouts like right there in your face.
What did you?
Now, I know that, you know, you don't need a three-foot slope to get water.
That's not a, that's not a three-foot slope, it's about a six-inch.
I get it. So, I mean, if you ran this down and guided it along the edge here, you probably could disguise it and even go around to the side of the building so that you're not seeing it on Main Street.
Poten, potentially.
Now, the other question that I've got is, is that, you know, this, this presumes if you've got the double peaks, that everything is coming to the north.
It is.
Is there not a way to re-pitch that flat side so that it goes?
The only way to create the, yeah, the only way to be, would be to create the gable like, like we've done, or go higher. And seems that no one wants to go higher at the front. You, you could go higher than what's currently there, but that is the low point of that, of that roof slope at the front.
Why doesn't anybody wanna go higher with that and keep the double gables? Is that ours or is that expense, a cost?
There's no way, I mean, I don't know how you go higher and keep the double peaks, like?
Yeah, you lose your slope.
Yeah, you're gonna lose your slope.
Yeah, you've got to adjust the slope.
Wasn't there a gargoyle face if the water came out of the?
Potentially. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. If someone remembers that, yeah.
There was a gargoyle face there.
Yes.
There was a gargoyle face the water came out of.
So that, so think about that, if the gargoyle.
Then can we reestablish that and maybe it arcs out to the front yard? Is that?
And water to the front yard, yeah. Potentially. But that's certainly not ideal because those windows, it comes, it's directly above the window, those two windows is where that gargoyle would be, or what we refer to as a lamb's tongue.
Do you know if the other peaks had twin peaks and were they altered to be one peak?
No. As far as we can tell from all the historical photos, the only double peak is on the front facade.
And did the previous owner experience flooding in the house? Cause this porch, this front porch, front porch has been gone for a long time.
No. I think, Patrick, the, currently, the gargoyle or the lamb's tongue must have been removed or fallen off. So that water that's coming off that low roof at the double peak is really, it's just, and you can see the stains, it's just blowing, it's sheet flowing down the front of the roof, directly above that, that window.
I gotta believe there's a way to divert it so that it at least goes around and you're not seeing it on Main Street. I hate to lose the, the double peak because it is a significant called-out feature on the OHI.
Yeah, the only thing that you could do.
You're already gone through a major historic issue.
You could.
Hopefully it's over, I don't wanna create another one.
You could do the downspout and try to hide it as best as possible. But you still have to have the slope. Is the slope is defined as what's in the rendering? Maybe, maybe not. It's, it's not gonna be completely hidden, for sure, the, the gutter and the downspout.
All right, would it be fair to ask that you go back and look at a couple of those kinda options and then come back to us? Can you do that? It's my suggestion.
Now, that's only for the double, the double peak feature. You know, I know Austin mentioned the, the other porches on the west side as well, as staff had some concerns with those.
I, I struggle with the idea that they did poor structuring historically back towards causing consistent water issues in my, in my personal opinion. I don't like the, I know you could probably play with the gutter a little bit or downspout maybe looking prettier, but it's still gonna come off the front, which?
Yep.
Doesn't make me like it much. And I do like how you guys have adjusted, I guess, the, or added. So I know there's a historic change there, but yet, I don't know, it's disappointing, it's frustrating to me that we don't, that historic structure is, was poorly planned.
Yes.
Which is gonna continue on.
Absolutely, it was, yeah.
But I know it's historic, but yet, you keep running with something historic that's gonna keep having an issue.
Right.
Is my only struggle with that. That's, that's the one piece. I mean, we can talk about the others, but I.
Cause I thought it was to try to make that gable as, as similar to the west gable.
I, I like what you have there. I, I think it looks, it looks good.
That's why I'm not making a motion to deny it. I'd rather table it and have them come back and see if there's anything else. And again, that's only on the double gable part of it.
Right.
The porch, we need to explore that further.
In your historical analysis or review of this, is that truly the way that was originally? I mean, it's so poorly designed.
I, I think it was because those lion, you know, gargoyles on the top of each peak, I mean, those are all still there. I do think that that's the way it was originally designed. Now, Tom, you, I mean, most of the photos that we saw from Patrick did have that feature still on there. I don't know, do you have any idea how all those photos were? Yeah, so it was nineteen hundred, so I, I think it was originally.
Yeah, that's, that's a shame, but.
But to add to your point, I think it was a poor design to begin with, just when it comes to consideration of stormwater, you know, handling the stormwater coming off that real small portion of the roof.
I mean, to a point I know, you were keeping that history with just adding on, but I know you're covering it to a point, but yet the history's still there. I know, it's a fine, I'm, I'm stretching there a little bit. I mean, you're, you're gonna adjust some of the history there, but it makes a lot more sense going forward.
Yeah, we're trying to solve, and that's the thing the planning commission needs to understand, we're trying to solve a problem. We're not, we're not just making it a single gable just because we like it. I mean, we're trying to solve the problem of the rain, you know, the rainwater.
The, the other issue that we're running into a little bit is the Queen Anne style is known for not having symmetrical roofs. Peaks everywhere is what they like and a lot of decorations everywhere. And that, keeping in that style would probably be why it's the split gable in the front and it doesn't match any other facade on the building.
Yes and no. I mean, we had a Queen Anne's house that we, I mean, this is over here on Water Street and they didn't have a double gable. I mean, the, the gables that faced east and south were pretty much identical and they were both single gables. And that's a Queen Anne's style, you know, home.
Well, and when you look at the other sides of the house, and they're single peaks.
Yes, yep.
So to me, that's not that big of a stretch to do this. And it looks like it thins that a little bit so you can see that it's. Will you take a look at?
Yeah, we can, we can look at the, the gutter and how we can get that downspout.
We have.
You can adjust the slope, but it still is gonna come off the front.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can look at that. You know, a rendering's one thing, you know, how it actually gets pieced together in the field from a construction standpoint might be a little bit different, but, yeah, we can certainly look at the updating that rendering to try to.
Whether the guttering is the same color as the paint?
Black. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, to a point, if you, depends on how you move that downspout, that takes away from some of the historic looks of it.
Yes.
And the front porch is already torn off.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Like, if you're putting a downspout, that's already different than maybe the gargoyle that was there before. So you're already altering the means of.
So let's keep it in perspective. The downspout isn't part of the OHI.
Oh, as far as the, the gargoyle or whatever, yeah.
Correct.
And the, and the double peaks, so.
Before we move, before we move off the, the double gable, there was a recommendation to not approve what, also a porch?
So, yeah, the, on the west facade, there's two, really three porch removals. One two-story porch removal and then one in the southwest corner of the west facade. And then they're proposing to infill one additional porch on that west facade. And those are a part of the denied recommendation, denied recommendation from staff.
Denied out to remove the porch?
Correct.
Okay.
Same question, were those added at some time to the original structure?
The rear porch might have been. I don't know if we have any documentation on when that rear porch was added. The, the single, the, the single story porch toward the south. That was an entry at some point, we don't know when. So I think. Um, that was an entry at some point, we don't know when, um, so I, I mean, we could do a little bit more research on that and try to find out, um, Tom, I don't know if any of the photos that we have-
It doesn't have moss covers, the original house had moss covers.
Yeah, yeah. So you could deduce that that was an addition at some point, we also feel that the rear portion of the structure was an addition at some point, you know, where the gable's coming out at the very south part of the, of the, the structure. So I, I, I think that rear porch was probably added on at some point, can we verify a hundred percent, you know, we could try to do a little bit more research on it, but, I mean, up till now, we have not been able to find anything that shows where that porch would have not been there at the original, you know, construction. I don't know if the O-H, um-
OHI.
O-HI references that rear porch at all, or not.
It, it doesn't reference that rear porch.
And what condition is that porch in?
But, yeah, that one is not in terrible shape, I wouldn't say it's in great shape, but it's not in terrible shape. The, the front two-story porch, and there's photos, Austin, I don't know if the planning commission got, uh, copied on all the photos, that the two-story porch is in extremely poor condition. I mean, there's, it, it's, it's very bad. Rotted out completely, pretty much.
Are you calling this the front porch?
No, that, there's a two-story, yes, yeah, mayor, yep, those, kinda the northwest corner of the, of the house.
If you're looking at that peak, it's to the left of that peak.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and so what's the reason to eliminate those?
So the, the south porch, the single story porch, um, that, that entry, there's really no need with, um, the current, the, the new use, let's say, for an entry there, that's gonna, that's right into an office, and so the idea was to remove the window, or I'm sorry, remove the door, infill that, and then remove the porch. So that would not be a means of entry or exit to the, to the structure.
And that's the single story rear porch?
The single story, correct.
What about the two-story?
The two-story, the main issue with the two-story is, uh, it's, it's really in, it, it's in terrible shape as far as the, uh, structure, um, also, I mean, a lot of the wood components are completely rotted out, and in my opinion, it, it would be cost prohibitive to rebuild that in an exact same, uh, style, size, et cetera, et cetera, that is there currently. Um, needless to say that the, the code for that, like, if you go up there, it, that, it's a very short, um, second story porch and the rail is not very high. So, uh, the floor is, I would not recommend anyone going out there, it, it's in pretty bad shape.
Now, if you were to rebuild it, would you, you'd have to go back to the, the code on it? You'd have to be code of carmature, railings and-
I would imagine, I mean, the county would-
It would be totally-
Yeah.
Mis, you know, misaligned.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and all those, all of those components up there are, they would all be custom, I mean, I mean, you can't just, you're not going to Loser on Vito to buy-
Fortunately, we, we get out of town on that.
Yeah. Yeah, the rail up there is probably not even thirty inches tall.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and you can see, Austin, the photos that we sent you, there's, there's water infiltration that's coming inside the, the two-story atrium right behind that porch, it, it's really, the water damage on the interior is significant, right, right behind the two-story porch.
Okay, so you, you used a term, I'm not sure that was what you meant to say or not, it's costly, what do you mean by cost prohibitive? Because it's not really a criteria until it becomes higher than the value of the, the structure.
The, the structure that you're replacing, or the entire structure?
Uh, typically, it's more than that, isn't it? When you're talking about demolition, it's not just the feature, it's-
The entire structure, yeah.
So the cost of the replacement of the, let's, I, I have no idea what the house is worth, let's say it's worth three hundred thousand, the porch would have to exceed three hundred thousand?
I, I defer to you guys on that.
It's, it's actually fifty percent of that cost. Fifty percent of the replacement cost.
So if you're the-
That's why I wanna make sure, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's cost prohibitive, it's costly.
If it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to become cost prohibitive from the way the code reads, then I doubt the porch is gonna be a hundred and fifty, but it's-
Substantial.
It's substantial, it's not five thousand dollars. It's gonna be-
What is anymore of it?
Is it, is the only means, in, in your opinion, for, is the only option removal, is there a rework of the existing structure that could stabilize it? Because when I was looking through those pictures, the interior damage looked, looked a lot like it's coming from that southwest part of the window on the inside, we had some bubbling, obviously, while it was getting, it looked to me like a lot of those issues are coming from the gutter, and that, I know the gutter is hidden, goes through the bracket of cornice and then down. And my issue with the application is I didn't see alternatives or, um, even estimates for repair, rather than the request was for the removal, and that was really my basis for denial.
Yeah, we could certainly come up with what it would be the cost to rebuild it, um, I, I have a feeling that that structure's in such poor shape, the two-story porch, that once you get into it, it's gonna be a domino effect where you're just removing more and more and more to get to the moisture infiltration that's going on.
Is, is money your concern by keeping that porch? I mean, is that, that's the point, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would say it contributes to the character of the building.
I, I'm a little confused on the, what, what are you doing in a situation like this where the, where the porch doesn't meet the code? You block it off where it can't be utilized, or how does that, how's it get addressed?
Great question.
I mean, that's, that's, you know-
Yeah.
If you replace it, you're meeting code, it's not even gonna look like it used to, just like you've got the proportion, if you build it to replace it one for one, it, I think you're not getting the strength to utilize a porch.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I mean, it's kinda unique, and there's, there's, there's another house that has mine somewhere in town that's similar to that, but it's like a nightmare, what we lost out on it.
Well, that's a question too, what's, what would supersede, you know, would the historic code, if you will, supersede the building code? I, I, I mean, my, my gut says no, the building code's gonna supersede, you know, from a life-safety standpoint, um, code enforcement. So, Jim, to your point, if we rebuild it, but then we have to construct it to meet current code, the proportions and everything are gonna be really off. And it really defeats the purpose of, you know, preserving the historical nature of that, that porch.
So you would be altering the roof line?
Just, ju- those, the gable would come in there to the valley, and so just the portion of that, where that second story porch would be, that's the portion that would be removed.
So just-
Yeah, exactly.
And then recreating that.
Exactly.
It's, it's an interesting detail, but I, I don't know how that's gonna be.
Is that called out on the OHI?
The porch?
The front porch?
The, the front porch, um, isn't specifically called out on the OHI, but it's referenced in a, a couple other, um, items that we received from the historic library, and in keeping with the Queen Anne's style.
But again, if you get into the, what I think Jim was saying, if you get that up to code, you're gonna have something completely different than what we already have on the side of the building, right?
That's, that's what I would do.
Which defeats the whole idea of the historic aspect of it, I would-
Yeah.
And it's kinda, I'm struggling with common sense items versus our historic piece.
I mean, you could redesign, come up with something, look decent with the code, but then it's not the same anyway, so you're, it's kind of a, a, a noise. I mean, I would think that, that definitely did cycle up.
So to, to me, if you're protecting the, the rest of the historic portions of the building and that, would supersede that a little bit, my mind?
Yeah, and at some point, there was a porch going across the entire front, and that, that was removed at some point in time.
Right, right. Really to be at least before two thousand and seven.
Yeah, I mean, the photos that we have of that porch are pretty, pretty old.
Before we had the planning commission, that's it.
Okay, what is the desire of the commission? We talked about, um, their tabling, to come up with some options on the double gable for the drainage? And then, now, did you want to handle these in, in two different manners, the porch separate from the gables?
I, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense.
What's the desire of the commission?
Let me ask one more question before we get into that, if I can. So on the front, I, I'm kinda concerned about the front, the front porch, I get, I get all the points about the building code, yeah, of course, can't, you're not even allowed to rebuild unless you're at the current building codes, but, and maybe this is something to look at as you are drawing up some options for the rainwater. Is there any way to incorporate some kind of, I don't know, quasi porch that also handles the diversion of the, of the, the downspouts to the, to the west, rather than the east, is how you drew it, you roughly drew it.
The west, you're saying, Patrick, take the downspout, start it going to the east, go to the west?
Yeah, go to the west, and then it comes, comes out the, uh, comes off the porch and hides it even, even better, I don't, I don't know, I'm not-
Like extend the, the existing, I mean, I, as soon as you start modifying that two-story porch, 'cause that porch only comes over, I don't have the drawings in front of me, but it, it only comes over, it doesn't come over all the way to the corner of the, of the house.
What are you gonna do with that downspout that runs right down next to it?
Can, I don't know which one you're talking about there. Yeah, so that one would move to the corner, to the, to their corner, yeah. It's, yeah, it, it's a little complicated, for sure. Yeah, we're not making, we're not trying to make design changes just for the sake of design change, we're, we're trying to really mitigate all the moisture issues.
We're not trying to put roadblocks in the way, just willy-nilly either.
I'm, I'm more apt to, to support the adjustments to retain the rest of the historic pieces of the house, I understand maybe some of the committee wants to see other options, which I guess may help to show that maybe it's, doesn't make a lot of sense after you see some of the different options and the cost. Some, I, that's, I guess that's where I'm at, I guess worst case scenario is I'm willing to table it to see the other options and the cost, but I lean more toward the, I think the appropriate repairs to the building to, for the long haul, but that's just me.
Well, now, yeah, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, Ed, um, but that's why I wanted to ask that last question before we separated the issues, you know, is there any urgency to do the porches right now, before you do the gables?
No, I think the, yeah, from an approval standpoint, they're all connected from a construction timeline standpoint, so-
So I would think if we could see, you know, everything again, just table it all and then come back, and if you can't do anything different on the porch side, you know, this is-
So Patrick, just so I'm clear, we're, we're gonna look at different options for the gutter along the front with the double peak, and then what, what are we looking at for the two-story porch?
Whether there could be any kind of connection between the gutter issue and the-
Okay, I get, okay.
Front west porch.
And then look at some cost, like the cost to reconstruct the two-story porch, okay.
I, I would also say, like, 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 looking at it just as a repair, what would it take to some repair access?
Yeah, from a cost standpoint.
Because that, because obviously here, you want it repaired rather than replaced, if we could see an element of that, if you're in an area of that-
Okay.
I'm thinking cost and safety and versus the requirements of the city or county, 'cause to me, that's, when I look at that, that's, I would say it's, it's a lot more than five thousand, like you said, it's gonna be a lot, um, and then the safety part of it also, and it's a very small patio, patio, right?
Yeah, it's tiny, yes.
So it's almost, hate to say useless, it's just there for cosmetics and historic look, which I get, is important, but if you could show some of that, I think that would be helpful for me.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, is that a motion to table?
Sure. If Sue can reconstruct this, please.
I'll, I'll second with the-
Motion to table what?
To table the entire-
Application.
Okay. The table motion is not debatable.
But we need a second.
I'll, I'll second with the idea that we're gonna get those updates.
Okay, the motions, we can continue.
When I look at this?
There's no question, we're discussing this.
That's fine. You know what, I'll have a little more.
Okay.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor, yes, West Mayor?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Milwaukee?
Yes.
It is unanimous to table the application.
Okay, now you're, I might-
Now the real hard ones, next. This next, this next one will be another hour, won't it?
Hello, thanks, Villa's Plan Development, Minor Amendment, Step Up Report.
Yes, sir, sir, so this is a minor amendment just for in lot eleven, two, three, one. Um, the applicant wishes to rotate the house and use the point at the rear to establish the rear yard setback. Uh, this would reduce the rear yard setback for the rear portion of the house, however, a small portion would increase that rear yard setback. Uh, in that attachment, you'll see here at the point, um, where the rear yard setback would be established is at a width of fifteen feet along the rear. The zoning code does allow for this on, on lots that, um, the whole backyard comes to a point at the rear, but because this is a corner lot, it does not allow for that. Um, but given that shape, uh, it's adjacent to a cul-de-sac, and directly to the, uh, south of this is, is a drainage lot, um, really did not see any hardships for allowing that. I also have the, uh, record plan, uh, for when this was approved, passes around with the lot question highlighted.
Austin, who, who was the basis for the request?
What was the basis for the request?
It was, it was the owner that's requesting the change, the order to construct this home?
Correct.
So the buyer is the one that's requesting this ultimately, so you have somebody and they want to rotate it?
Yes, they want to see the water, they want water being, and on the way to the water to rotate on the left.
And so, Austin, what exactly is the issue? That fifteen feet?
The, the rear yard setback's twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
The, it's where that rear yard setback is established for the current PD, um, would be measured from that entire lot line opposite the shortest front yard. So what they're requesting is to use the point, um, at a width of fifteen feet, which occurred allows for other types of lots, but they're wanting that to apply on this in lot.
So if it wasn't angled towards the water view, what would the setback be?
It would be at twenty-five feet from that sou- southern lot, so the entire southern lot, you'd take twenty-five feet off that.
See, the only difference is we're, we're using the point as the reference instead of the whole backyard.
Yes, sir, and this is only-
We're still talking about a twenty-five foot setback.
Correct, off that one, off that fifty-foot. And it's only for that one in lot, this isn't an overall amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve, a second.
Stretch that a little bit.
Mayor? Yes. West Mayor?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Milwaukee?
Yes.
Titterington?
Yes.
Approved. Water view is great- Water view is great.
Okay, any other items?
None, sir.
Motion for adjournment?
Uh, second.
Have a motion, second, call the favor?
Aye.